Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of December 5th, 2022. Ms. Swetnam, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Young. Councilmember Walters.
Here.
Councilmember Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember McDougall.
Here.
Councilmember Hubig.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
I move we excuse Mr. Young from tonight's meeting.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Carter, a second by Ms. Hubig, to excuse Mr. Young from tonight's meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, we're all ready to Item Three, which is Announcements and Committee Reports. I've got a couple of announcements. If you haven't noticed, we're a little short-staffed here in the Clerk Department, so sick and family commitments, so thank you, Ms. Swetnam for filling in, and I'm sure you'll be able to keep us, keep me in order. Also, Tressle, there will be a fundraiser that we'll be hosting here in City Hall and some exciting announcements from some great community partners that have really stepped up to help out. We're still waiting on two permits, one from the Army Corps and a state permit. We did receive a letter to proceed from the Coast Guard, so we're getting real close to getting those permits taken care of. Lots of fun events in the holiday season, so after not electrocuting myself with the tree lighting, we had a good holiday parade on Saturday, and we'll have Winter Wonderland Walk Friday and Saturday, December 9th, 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Washington Park Campground will be decorated with holiday cheer by local groups and organizations, and there will be live music, campfires, and hot chocolate. There'll be horse-drawn trolley rides downtown Saturday, the 10th and the 17th, noon to 3:00 p.m., brought to you by the Chamber of Commerce. The Anacortes Schools Foundation will have Celebrate the Season Events at the Port Transit Shed Saturday and Sunday, 10th and 11th. Again, that's this weekend. Live entertainment, photo with Santa, Student Marketplace, and Free Arts and Crafts for the Family. And more information can be found at the Anacortes Schools Foundation website about what those activities are. I think that's it from me. On to Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at 5:00 p.m. today, and it was Mr. Walters, myself, and a whole slew of Public Works staff from all over the department range. We met Brian Walker, who is our new wastewater treatment plant manager, who will be taking over for Becky Fox, who's retiring this month. It was very nice to meet him. Brandon Lowery was there from operations, and they are just about completing the 9th Street sidewalk by the marina, so that will be a welcome change for a lot of people. It'll be a lot smoother over there. We spent a fair amount of time talking about the 2023 pavement management program, which was great to learn about. There will be an overlay project in Skyline that will cover about 1.2 miles, and that's going to take about $1.1 million of our $2.4 million that's set aside for next year. And that project was planned for 2022, but between different upgrades to utilities in that area, it was postponed until 2023, so that will be happening there. And that is asphalt. We also talked about the chip seal project, which costs about half as much. Asphalt costs about $33 a square yard, and chip seal costs about $16 a square yard, we found out, for the whole process, from prep to completion. And that will mostly take place around Q Avenue and the side streets off it, and also Fidalgo Bay Road, two miles of that. And chip seal adds about five to seven years to the life of the streets that it covers. And Fidalgo Bay Road is also on the capital facilities plan for a complete redo, which will cost at least $10 million. So the city is working with the Samish Tribe, potentially obtaining grants to do that, and that will probably take about five to seven years, so this chip seal project will get us to there and be a good improvement to that road. Then we had an update on the Automated Meter Infrastructure Program, which is the meter reading for the city and the antenna that have been put up, or one on City Hall, and then permitting for four more, one by the 29th Street Reservoir, one by the Skyline Reservoir, and then two on South Fidalgo for when the city takes over the South Fidalgo Water System from the Skagit PUD coming up next year. And that is about it. Oh, just the water meter program, there's a modification to the contract and the consent agenda today, so we got a brief update on that. And then Public Works will be coming to do an informational presentation on that system as well as the water system plan. Brian McDaniel, our water treatment plant manager, gave us a draft report on drinking water in the Skagit watershed, which looks fantastic, so that will be made available to the public, and we'll get a good presentation on that, so we all know what's happening there. And it's, oh, it's to do also with the effects of climate change and how we're preparing for that, so lots of good stuff. Thanks, Public Works.
Thank you. Next is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee Report.
Mr. Miller, Mayor Miller.
Okay. Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. So the Hacks Committee met on Thursday, councilmembers Cleland McGrath, councilmember Walters, and I, and staff, and we had a couple of people who were there to just kind of observe from the public. And we talked a lot about the ordinances that are on the agenda tonight. We talked about those, and so I'll leave that discussion for here later in the meeting. And what else did we talk about? A little bit about the, about garbage and waste on T Avenue, and just tossed around some ideas of how that could be addressed, and talked about the outreach that's continually happening there, where people that are there are given access to services and clothing and food and necessities such as that. That's pretty much it. Yeah, so more on that as the meeting progresses. Thanks.
Thank you. Fiber Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Fiber Committee met last week, and we have a brief report, and there's going to be a further staff report in the next couple weeks, so we can summarize, I think, just a few things here. First of all, we now have 1,686 customers in service, 50 more than the end of October. We've had something of a slower rate of install lately due to greater install complexity, sickness, staffing changes. But we do have a 45% take rate in the West End. 400 more customers are on the list to get hooked up. Our rate is about 20 per week, best case, so there's probably 20 more weeks to connect those customers that are on that list. We are basically 50% take rate in our pilot area, got another 10 orders in that area, where we already are well exceeding our projected 35%. And we have a 30% take rate already in the Gwemus View area, which is the next one to be done, where we don't yet have that distribution system in the ground. Almost all customers there will be underground, and so there will be a similar level of complexity for some of those installs. We made a couple of changes to the master services agreement, looking at the force measure provision and refund provisions. We don't offer refunds for outages for business or residential class service. Direct internet access would get a proportional refund if there are outages. And we talked about outages. We've had one major outage that wasn't an outage related to our equipment, it was related to our service provider upstream of us. We have redundant circuits to that service provider, but the outage occurred upstream of those redundant circuits. So we are looking at getting a backup circuit from a separate provider, where we would incur some additional cost. We would probably not actually use that circuit, except in the event of an outage. But we would be also adjusting the rest of our services, so we're probably looking at close to a net zero cost for that. And we'll be upgrading our connection speed, because as we add more customers, we need to keep pace with the connection speed upstream. Otherwise, I think maybe just a few more mechanics. We, this year, have $80,000 worth of positive cash flow, but fiber has spent $4 million more than it brought in, because we are doing this big capital expense of the project expansion. The next fiber presentation by staff to council, I think, is scheduled for December 12th, and we can get all of our questions answered then. Oh, and then one other, we did talk about a couple other potential single points of failure in the system, to try to eliminate those, our router, our OLT, and we have a pretty good expectation that those, because they have redundant power supplies, redundant line cards inside of them, we think that we have a pretty good setup there. It probably would be desirable to own another router, and that will happen in the future, but it's not a very high likelihood that we would have a failure in the existing piece of equipment that we couldn't recover from. And then I'd also like to report on our meeting of our Planning Committee meeting about the arts center. So the Planning Committee, Ms. Moulton, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and I met to talk with the arts festival about their proposal to assume the lease of the arts, of the cinema building, to turn it ultimately into an arts center. And we threw around quite a few ideas for how that lease might shake out, and what we came up with was a proposal to draft a new lease that is written, say, maybe more professionally than the existing lease. So no assignment of the existing lease, but a new lease that basically continues the major terms of the existing lease. So 30 years, or 30 plus 10 plus 10, or 50 years, whatever the arts festival prefers there, for the existing lease amount, plus CPI inflator, providing that they would use that space for the next four years for first-run movies, or they might transition it to an arts center sooner if they line up their capital, line up their fundraising, line up their project management. And if they were to pursue the arts center sooner than that, they would come to us for lease amendment. There are a few other details that will be worked out between the attorneys, and then it will come to full council for consideration.
Any other announcements, committee reports? All right, we're on to Item Number Four, which is Public Comment, and this is an opportunity for any member of the public that wants to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda, and I suspect a lot of folks are here to address the council on Item Number Six, B, C, and D, which are ordinances, and potentially the resolution for a levy lid lift. But if you're not here to talk about that, this would be the time to come up and address the council. All right, well, we'll make sure to call you up when we get to the ordinances. And again, we did receive lots of public comment via email that is kept for the record. All right, we're on to our consent agenda, Items A through E. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Could we pull Item C?
Item C, okay.
I move approval of the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. McDougall to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, D, and E. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mr. Walters, Item 5C, Contract Modification Water Meter Antenna Design.
This item is to extend the design contract with the engineering firm that is working on our water meter antenna design. That's something that we received a presentation on in the Public Works Committee meeting. We thought it was an interesting presentation. We thought that it was worthy of showing it to full council, and so we made that suggestion to Public Works. I don't think that you'll see this presentation and think anything other than, great, we should continue with this project and approving this contract amendment. So I don't propose that we delay the contract amendment or any part of the project, and I would move approval of the project at this point, or move approval of the contract modification as proposed.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Yeah, I think it's a good point. It's a really interesting project, and we'll be sure to update council and the public on that project. Okay, we're on to Other Business. Item 6A, this is Final Plat Approval, the Crossings Unit Lot Subdivision. And Ms. Grange, you'll be doing this one, and again, this is a closed record, I believe. Ms. Grange, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, and good evening, members of the council, members of the public. So this evening before you is a final plat application for the Crossings Unit Lot Subdivision, and the city file number for that is LPS 2020-0001. The site location, the project site location for the crossings is, you can see the site here out in western, western Anacortes, just east of Anna Copper Mine Road and the airport, south of Copper Pond Development, and west of Oregon Avenue and Meadows Lane. The site is about five and a half acres in size. This is aerial photo showing before the site development that's occurred. The applicant for the final plat application is Anna Copper LLC, and they're represented by Nell Stramberg. The overall project is for a 21-lot subdivision, including 18 units for cottages, and then three standard single-family lots. City Council did issue preliminary plat and site plan approval for this project back in November of 2020. And this is a picture of the preliminary plat that was approved that time. And because I couldn't really remember the last time we had a final plat, come before council, I think it's been a couple of years, so I thought it might be helpful just to have a quick overview of the subdivision process, and how that process goes, and where the final plat step fits within the rest of that process. So that's what this slide is showing. Of course, there are preliminary steps, including a pre-application meeting, neighborhood meeting, before the applicant can submit a formal subdivision application. When the formal subdivision application is submitted, city staff reviews that for conformance with all the applicable codes, puts out a notice of application, soliciting any public comment, conducts environmental review, and then there is a public hearing before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission makes a recommendation to city council, and ultimately, the city council makes a decision on the preliminary plat. And in this case, for the cottages, city council approved the preliminary plat application and site plan. And once that occurs, the applicant can submit civil construction plans, which includes all of the plans for roads, utilities, site infrastructure, grading, all of that work. And once those are approved, the site construction can begin. Once the construction is completed, and all of the public improvements are in, then the applicant comes in for what's called a final plat application. So that's where we are now with this project application, so it's gone through all those steps. And then the next step after that, if the council approves the final plat, would be for the applicant to record the final plat drawing with the Skagit County Auditor, which then creates individual lots for sale. So again, the action requested by the city council this evening is a decision on the final plat application. The criteria for final plat are outlined in AMC 1932, which is a subdivision section of the code. And what that code says is that the council must review the final plat at a public meeting per the review criteria. There's no public hearing required, and if the council approves the final plat, the mayor is authorized to inscribe and execute the written approval of the council on the face of the plat. And the review criteria for approval of subdivisions are that the final plat substantially conforms to the preliminary plat approval, that it contains any required dedications, and that it meets the chapter requirements and other applicable ordinances that are in place at the time the application was deemed complete. So staff has reviewed the final plat application for all of these items. We've worked with the developer to ensure that all conditions of preliminary plat have been satisfied. The Public Works Department has been out to the site and inspected all of the improvements, and made sure that the improvements are constructed per the approved plans. All public improvements have been installed and approved. Security devices have been approved and are effective, so that includes the maintenance bond for the public improvements that are in place, and the wetland buffer enhancement, maintenance, and monitoring. There's a five-year bond that goes along with that. And then finally, utilities are in, stormwater infrastructure, and a drainage maintenance covenant have been recorded, and the applicant submitted a final plat drawn by a surveyor depicting the layout of the lots. So just thought I'd share a couple of pictures of what the site looked like a week ago. It changes quickly, obviously, but these were taken last week, so this photo up in upper left is showing Oregon Avenue, connection between, well, the existing, the previously existing terminus of Oregon Avenue and Meadows Lane is located to the north, so this is looking south. And then this is the project entrance, Crosswoods Court is the name. It's a private road. This, in the lower left-hand corner, is looking west. This is the private entry road to the cottages. This, up in the upper right, see some stormwater swell infrastructure there, and then the detention pond in the lower right. So those that were on the council when this was going through their preliminary plat approval may recall the wetland on site, and lots of discussion about that. This is what it looks like today with the pedestrian trail and the buffer enhancement plantings all completely installed. Just a few before and after on the left-hand side, that was the previous driveway that accessed the existing, the previously existing single-family home gravel impervious surface, and that's been restored with pervious materials and still provides a pedestrian access out to Anna Copper Mine Road. And then this is just one that shows on the left, the previous state of the wetland buffer, which was just maintained as a mowed lawn all the way up to the perimeter of the wetland. And this is, on the right, is an after photo showing the enhancement plantings, trees, and that the grass is being allowed to grow into a meadow. And then finally, on this project, there are some, I think there are eight or nine cottage units that are in some stage of construction right now. These are photos of a few of those, and some of the amenities that are also being constructed, a garden area, open space areas. And then this is the final plat map that will get recorded with Skagit County, well, one page of it. So there are actually four pages, but it's got the notes, certificates that get signed by the city declaration, that gets signed by the property owner and the auditor, dedication of utility easements, and native growth protection area for the critical area, plat conditions. This is the final plat drawing, showing the cottage portion to the north, and then the three standard single-family lots to the south. So 21, 20, and 19 are all over 7,500 square feet. And then this is just a close-up of the cottage portion of the unit lot subdivision. And that's all I have this evening. Staff is recommending that city council approve the final plat for the cottages unit lot subdivision, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Grange. Mr. Walters.
Well, this is a ministerial approval. If the plat conforms to the conditions in the preliminary plat, then we must approve it. And importantly, the landowner's not allowed to sell any lots until the final plat has been approved. So you have a recommendation for approval. Is there any condition of the preliminary plat that has not been achieved here?
No.
Okay. Makes it easy for us. Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move approval of the final plat for city file number LPS 2020-0001.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Carter to approve the final plat, LPS 2020001, the Crossings Unit Lot Subdivision. Any additional discussion? Ms. Swetnam, would you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Walters.
Yes.
Councilmember Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Councilmember Moulton.
Yes.
Councilmember McDougall.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hubig.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item 6B, we've got three ordinances, B, C, and D, and Mr. Walters is already moving over there to get set up. We'll take the ordinances one at a time. 4035 is 6B, and that's oversized parking. This is a discussion item with possible action, and Mr. Walters, whenever you're ready.
We have proposed three ordinances that are before city council tonight for a second reading. These ordinances are intended to deal with a number of issues that we have had in the city of Anacortes, issues that include but are not limited to problems with people that are homeless. We've got some slides here that summarize some of the changes proposed from existing code. None of these issues are wholly of new first impression to the city of Anacortes. So I would like to provide a summary of what problems we are trying to solve, what are the proposals in terms of what the code says, and then what will be the effects. First of all, the parking ordinance. Currently, our code prohibits the parking of junk vehicles all over town. It prohibits the parking of passenger cars that aren't junk, limited to 72 hours, more than 72 hours. But then it includes some other provisions that allow you to continue to park your passenger car that isn't junk in front of your own house. There are constraints, though, in that your passenger car doesn't include an RV, it doesn't include a trailer, it doesn't include a boat, it doesn't include a variety of vehicles that you might think of, because of the code, as written today, limits it to passenger As late as 2014, I think it was, Mr. Miesmer had come to us with a proposal for an ordinance that would regulate oversized vehicles, because they had been a constant problem in particularly some neighborhoods, where people that had vehicles that frequently were commercial vehicles, or were RVs, or were trailers, and including boats, boats on trailers, were nuisances to the neighborhood. And so he proposed some language. It involved quite a few edits to the parking chapter, because as a general matter, our parking chapter isn't very well-written. chapter isn't very well-written, and we've had some discussions with the city attorney about the need to go back and rewrite the entirety of the parking chapter. But here, we're only looking at oversized vehicles, which was really the focus of Mr. Meesmer's 2014 draft that he ultimately set aside as we launched into the updated comprehensive plan and other more important matters because there are some difficulties in even administering the parking code as written, let alone proposed changes to the parking code. But what's important in our proposal is that we would prohibit RVs, trailers, other oversized vehicles from parking more than four hours in residential areas. And residential areas is defined in the proposal to include all the residential zones plus a couple of other areas that are not residential zones but are characterized by residential development. So that would be a difference from the existing 72-hour rule. And then keeping in mind that you can go beyond 72-hour with your passenger car under the code as written today, but you can't go beyond 72 hours under today's code with anything else. It would also change the penalty for a violation of that 72-hour rule from what is currently a misdemeanor to a civil infraction. And this question had come up at our last meeting on this, so let me go into a little bit more detail here. A misdemeanor is a criminal offense. A misdemeanor has a potential penalty of 90 days in jail and $1,000 fine. The difference with a Class II civil infraction is that it is not a crime, it is simply a monetary penalty. It's akin to a traffic ticket. It doesn't, when you're applying for a job and the question is asked, "Have you ever been convicted of a crime?", if you've gotten a traffic ticket, you can generally say no because that's not a criminal offense. And the code as written today, with that misdemeanor provision in it, does not mean that it can be basically enforced hardly at all because the misdemeanor provision means that you may be entitled to a public defender under some circumstances. It may mean that you are entitled to a jury trial. It may mean a substantial expenditure of public resources to enforce the code using that misdemeanor provision. But moreover, in my judgment and the judgment of probably most of us, including maybe most members of the police department, a misdemeanor is not an appropriate punishment. A criminal offense is not an appropriate punishment for parking wrong. So an important provision in this proposal would change the penalty for these kinds of violations from a misdemeanor to a civil infraction. And we've done that all over the code over the past 10 years, you know, barking dog violations, fireworks violations, lots of different things like that. We've changed from misdemeanors to civil infractions. The next ordinance is sidewalk obstruction. The proposal would prohibit laying or sleeping on the sidewalk obstructing businesses in the central business district and commercial zones between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. It would distinguish obstruction of sidewalks, which is in our existing code, from obstruction of streets and alleys, which are currently regulated the same way. And it would clarify that obstruction of streets and alleys, obstruction of the street is a misdemeanor. Right now, the code says it's a crime and doesn't really specify what the penalty is, but there is a general provision in our code that makes all unspecified crimes misdemeanors. And then it would characterize obstruction of sidewalks as a Class III civil infraction and then a misdemeanor if there's a third violation. Again, this is important because we have a lot of problems with people parking over sidewalks. We occasionally have problems with people sitting or laying down on sidewalks in our commercial zones or our central business district. But throughout the city, we have obstructions of sidewalks. We spend a lot of money on sidewalks. Sidewalks are really important to people that have disabilities, to people that don't have cars that need to use pedestrian locomotion to get around. Just yesterday, I drove down O Avenue and saw a woman with a walker in the street, in that case because we lack a sidewalk on the block in which she was trying to get through. But one block beyond, there was a sidewalk and there were people parked across it. So we have an ongoing problem with sidewalk obstruction, and this would help facilitate enforcement of that because it would make it a civil infraction, a ticket versus a misdemeanor. And then, of course, that addition is the prohibition on laying or sleeping on the sidewalk in those two zones, CBD and commercial zones, between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Now, some might say, "Well, why those hours and why those zones?" Well, the answer is those zones are our commercial zones, and if we have obstruction of our businesses in our commercial zones, we will limit the ability of our businesses to thrive. We will have negative effects on our businesses. Why between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. and why only those zones? The reason is because, as we've heard from the city attorney two weeks ago, in a pretty well-done summary of the case law that controls a lot of our actions in this space, we are limited in what we can do when the regulatory effect of an ordinance may be that it provides people without homes no other option. And people without homes don't have a home to go back to by definition, so they seek to shelter themselves on public property. Private property would be a trespass, so on public property is where people go. And so if people need to sleep, it would be allowed to sleep even in these two zones between 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m., just not during the day. And then the third ordinance is a trespassing ordinance. And right now, we trespass people from city facilities. This only applies to trespassing from city facilities, but we don't do it based on any kind of city code. So we don't have a process, we don't have due process associated with trespassing people from city facilities, and we don't have a standardized code of conduct. So for example, we've trespassed people from City Hall, we've trespassed people from the library. People who are extraordinarily disruptive can be trespassed from our city facilities, and they can also be trespassed from private property, but that's a separate process. Here, we would provide a standard code of conduct for all city property. We would provide authority for the police department to issue a trespass warning, which is simply a piece of paper saying, "You've violated that code of conduct and you can't come back to this facility," not all city facilities, "but this facility for a specified amount of time." And the code lays out a progressive period of time, the first violation is, I think, seven days and up to one year. It would also provide for a process for appeal and a process for that person to be able to access the city facility even if they are issued a trespass warning because they need to pay a utility bill or they need to engage with their city council member or they need to perform some other function associated with a government facility. And all of those are driven by case law and the fundamental rights of people to participate in their government and have the right to due process if their government excludes them from a space. We have these events. So we have people who are extraordinarily disruptive at city facilities. We cannot permit them to stay in a city facility and disrupt the use of that facility for everyone else. And so today, we are issuing them trespass warnings, but we are doing that without the benefit of these due process protections and without the benefit of a prescription on how long those trespass warnings should issue for. The penalty for violating a trespass warning is simply the crime of trespass under the state statute. That would not change. But there's no penalty associated for getting the trespass warning. If you get the trespass warning, it's simply a warning, like it said, and it's only a violation of the warning that triggers the criminal penalty in this case. And if we wanted to, we could provide for a civil penalty. However, there is no penalty at all just to get that warning. So importantly, these provisions apply to everybody. They apply to classes of vehicles, they apply to classes of behavior. They are not targeted at the homeless. They would deal with some issues that have been presented. For example, vehicles on T Avenue have occasionally migrated into residential neighborhoods, and we've gotten complaints about that. And this would allow an RV to be parked in such a residential neighborhood for only a total of four hours, and then it would need to move someplace else. But it wouldn't prohibit the parking of RVs throughout the city, and it would be problematic for us to try to expand this prohibition to the entire city for all the reasons that the city attorney laid out two weeks ago, and because that would start to look like criminalization of homelessness, which is something that I certainly wouldn't want to do, it would be illegal for us to do, and it would be functionally not possible for us to do it. If we prohibit RVs everywhere, we will end up with encampments, and then it's not a parking violation. So the intent here is to prescribe boundaries on some behavior, decriminalize offenses to make them more enforceable where we need to do some enforcement, but prescribe those boundaries on behavior because without that, we have citizen complaints, we have police trying to do the right thing, but the police need to be instructed by the law as to what we think, as the legislative authority, are those boundaries. And for the same reason that we passed a prohibition on camping in our parks, but importantly, not a camping ban citywide, if the police are to prohibit people from the parks, then they need to be backed up by a code provision that says that. And we pass that provision because we value the condition of our parks, we value the ability for the ordinary people to enjoy our parks, and because there are other places for people to go. So there's a lot more to do in this space. We propose these ordinances not simply as the end-all, be-all of dealing with these types of problems, but as one piece of the puzzle to prescribe those boundaries while we are doing all the other things that we are doing in terms of providing social services, especially to the homeless. And this year, we budgeted an additional $50,000 for community action to open a physical office here. We just won a grant to get a master's-level social worker to help the fire department respond to situations where we really need the benefit of a social worker. We already have one social worker working with the police department from the family center, and we are working on an effort to help low-income residents with their utility bills. We're working on ways to get more housing for the housing authority. Plus, we are about to open this month, in just a couple of weeks, the first housing facility that we funded with our affordable housing sales tax. So we are doing quite a bit of work in this space, but some of that work does necessarily need to be some boundaries on behavior, and that's what we've proposed. So I know the mayor said that we would take these one at a time. I've now covered all three of them because there is some interaction between them. Mr. Meesmer had identified a couple of issues with our proposed parking ordinance, and we think we probably need to spend a little bit of time figuring out what to do when there is no curb because there are a lot of somewhat unimproved portions of the right-of-way that make enforcement a little bit more difficult, and we may want to think about that a little bit more. But some of the others, the other two ordinances may be closer to being ready for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. I thought that was a great summary of all the changes and proposals. Did council, I think it was probably a good idea to take public comment on at this time. Again, the council has received much of the written public comment in the packets, and I know you've seen those. There was maybe a couple of late ones come in. But members of the public, if you're ready to comment, come on up and comment. Yep, okay. Yeah, we do everything on the microphone, so it's taped, especially because Ms. Swetnam's sitting in for our person who takes the minute, so I'm going to try to help her.
Okay, Beth Bell reside at 1514 Seventh Street, and I have a question on this before I make my public comment. The question is, under Section 1, 3, the I, the 2, the 3, and 4, do you have a map of that so we can see what LM Zone is, CBD Zone, and MS Zone are? Because I'd like to see that before I make comment.
Yeah, we used to have one of those zoning, big zoning maps up here in City Hall. That would be helpful, but yeah, I don't have one in front of me. I don't think we could pull one up right now, but...
No, because we'd have to draw some of those provisions. And I have one proposed addition to that list as well, but it's generally sort of the residential, the area characterized by residential development sort of around Trident, and then also on the other side of Commercial Avenue, the marine shipping zone, and then I would propose the commercial marine zone where there's some additional residential areas.
All right. Any other comments from the audience on the ordinances? Yeah, come on up, and we just require you to state your name and whether you live in Anacortes or not. It's helpful to know who our constituents are. You don't need to give your address.
Hello, my name is Kate Clark. I'm an Anacortes resident. I have some feedback for all of the ordinances, so we'll just go through all of them. The big question is, in this discussion amongst council, have you closely been discussing the possibility of litigation? With the precedent of Martin versus Boise, let's just revisit that, that the ruling held that cities cannot enforce anti-camping ordinances if they do not have enough homeless shelter beds within the community for their homeless population. This is a breach of constitutional rights. So though this has been changed to a civil infraction from a misdemeanor, as Ryan Walters mentioned, with three infractions, we get a misdemeanor. So this is going to accelerate ultimately misdemeanors and then jailing within a potential rapid succession of four hours. So from the public Q and A a few weeks ago, we know there are community members more than willing to call police as much as possible, that was stated publicly, once this ordinance passes and abuse this proposed ordinance. So ultimately, this stopgap measure will create more arrests, and beyond Martin versus Boise, we have another Washington State Supreme Court precedent that goes into this. These arrests will put people at risk of having their vehicles impounded, which the city of Anacortes did last week. This vehicle was the person's primary residence, and this exact scenario was litigated and struck down as illegal in Washington State Supreme Courts under the Homestead Act. So beyond the breach of Martin versus Boise, is the city of Anacortes prepared for this potential litigation? So then, moving on to the sidewalk obstruction, let's just read directly from Martin versus Boise, which is, "This proposal, though it's within a specific timeframe," that doesn't matter, "it still is within contravention of the Eighth Amendment rights." So this ruling, this is direct quote from the court ruling, "The imposition of criminal penalties for sitting, sleeping, or lying outside on public property for homeless individuals who cannot obtain shelter, any conduct at issue here is involuntary and inseparable from status. They are one and the same, given that human beings are biologically compelled to rest, whether sitting, lying, or sleeping. As a result, just as the state may not criminalize the state of being homeless in public spaces, the state may not criminalize conduct that is an unavoidable consequence of being homeless, namely, sitting, lying, or sleeping on the streets." I mentioned this last week in my public comment, these ordinances are directly pushing against Eighth Amendment rights through technicalities. So you really need to think about the fact that this has been fought in previous courts, and are you prepared for that here? Lastly, in the proposed trespassing ordinances, with the language of who can authorize trespass warnings, it's now being proposed that APD officers can do that beyond the city department head. So what is the proposed training involved with this change and expansion and responsibilities? Lastly, the Uniform Code of Conduct language, the proposed code described as dangerous, illegal, or unreasonably disruptive. Unreasonably disruptive is an incredibly vague term and can equally be abused potentially depending on the circumstance. So that also requires more specific language in it. So I close really asking you all to consider these precedents within Washington State Supreme Court and really think about how we sit as a city within that and what we are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Come on up.
I'm Evan Saxton. I'm Evan Saxton. Have not yet been asked to leave Anacortes, so I still live here. I just want to speak very quickly about the three proposed ordinances. Thinking of it from the way it may personally affect me, because these will affect the entire community, sometimes I'll, you know, so, particular example, go to Gueimas Island to experience a concert. Sometimes might not be able to park in the parking that's provided, whether that's logistics, whether that's space available, whichever. Chances are, I might be parking in front of someone's home for more than, you know, without their permission. I feel sometimes that many residents in our community feel that the parking in front of their house is their sole domain, that they have authorization to dictate who parks in front of their house, when they're public streets, and they are not. We are officially codifying that mentality, and I think that that's rather unacceptable. Again, regarding the four-hour parking limit of oversized vehicles, I think all of us occasionally dabble in social media, and we're inspired by the Van Life people, and, you know, they're having sold their homes to, you know, live a nomadic lifestyle in an RV. Many of those people do not have more than one vehicle, and sometimes that they may be visiting a friend or whichever, and that is one example where I feel that the impact might expand beyond that four hours and impact people more than who, an unforeseen consequence of this law. Thinking about the sidewalk obstruction ordinance, we, the way I interpreted reading the code, while it does affect individuals who may be lying on the street, it also appeared to read as if the obstructions on the sidewalk could be signs and chairs and those sorts of things requiring permitting. That, I asked a few business owners in town whether they have permits for the things they keep on the sidewalks that could otherwise obstruct under the rules as written, and they do not. So, it seems to me that, again, that component of this ordinance may not be fully baked and should be reconsidered. Finally, just to kind of reflect what Kate said about the trespassing ordinance, the police officer is suddenly granted sole decision-making upon what this vague code of conduct might be. Walk in, excuse somebody from the building, and they are no longer permitted for the given amount of time based on the sole discretion of an individual who is, may or not, may not be trained to execute that in a holistic way. Secondly, the code of conduct itself, should we really be asking our governments to establish what one's code of conduct is? We establish laws, but a code of conduct feels much more softer and much more subject to interpretation, and an interpretation that may not be fair to the individual being excused from the public location. I've spoken with a number of the houseless individuals in Anacortes, and some of them have been trespassed from public restrooms. I think that that is a big issue in terms of options available to a person, and that is one potential unforeseen consequence, that the options for using a restroom is suddenly very limited. So, what I'm asking is the city council to reject these three ordinances outright. If they need to be softened, then that would be revisited, but I think that generally they are not well-thought-through and poorly, stand to be poorly executed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to comment on the ordinances? Please, come on up. I've been a little lenient on time since there are three ordinances. If you're watching at home, state your name and where you live.
Mayor Miller, I'm Mark McKeithren, resident of Anacortes, and thank you, council, for listening us tonight and the effort you put into doing this. I appreciate your efforts to resolve the issues of the long-term illegally parked cars and RVs, and I'm speaking tonight in favor of the new parking ordinances and the other ordinances also, as it will help the police in their efforts. I appreciate Councilman Walters even being open to including the north end of T Avenue and Sixth Street in downtown in that defined residential areas. I've addressed the council on two other occasions about the RVs and cars and the drug deals that we witnessed occurring right on Sixth and T Avenue. I must admit before that, I had never been to a council meeting. I express my ignorance of not knowing at all what happens here, and for the last two months, Monday night has been the council date night, I guess you would say. So, it's been quite enlightening, and I appreciate the work and effort you all put into this. I urge you to make this decision based on data, facts, and looking ahead to what impact this and all these decisions will have, not just next month, but in the next five to 10 years. These decisions reflect the future and culture of the town you are trying to maintain and create. Decisions like this and all your decisions have lasting impact. Addressing the stationary RVs, arresting the drug distribution sites, or whether or not to hire additional firemen or policemen on a short-term basis has an impact on whether businesses stay here, firemen and police even want a job here, whether people visit us, or if people decide to move away. Those businesses, taxpayers, and visitors are what give us the dollars to help those homeless that truly desire not to be homeless and not just taking advantage of a system that gives them all they need with no expectations or responsibilities. Just look at the policies downtown's Portland, Seattle, San Francisco, it has chased away its residents, visitors, and businesses. So, please, look ahead for the sake of our future town. I urge you to vote on these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Come on up.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Kako McCracken. I'm a resident of Anacortes. I have a question for one of the ordinances, the allowable hours for folks to use a sidewalk for sleeping or resting, and I confess, I haven't been to a couple of the prior meetings, so I don't know if this was already answered, but I'm curious about the 10:00 hour in terms of that being kind of the start time for somebody to, you know, put down sleeping materials. 10:00 in December is significantly different from 10:00 in July, and I'm just wondering if that was a consideration when the ordinance was drafted, merely because I know I'm ready for bed at 8:00 right now, and I just, I can't imagine kind of the distress of someone in the cold waiting hours in dark and, you know, a cold night in order to place sleeping materials down. So, I'm just wondering if there was, you know, kind of conversation about the difference in that and whether there was talk of accommodation made for season and weather. I also want to address the idea that being homeless is immediately correlated to addiction, mental health. I think that we all either ourselves have experienced addiction, mental health issues, or we have a loved one who has, we have coworkers, neighbors, friends. These are illnesses, these are recognized illnesses. In fact, poverty is, there's a high correlation with diabetes and cancer and heart disease as well, and somehow those are socially acceptable diseases where these other diseases are not, and people are vilified for experiencing them. So, I just kind of want to push back on that narrative that every homeless person is an addict or a pedophile or somehow experience, you know, in a mental health crisis. Certainly, some do, and sometimes for very good reasons, because poverty is nothing anyone wants to experience, and no one, no one wants to be homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, still open to the public to talk about these ordinances before I turn it over to council. Yep, come on up.
Rochelle, ke'aloha, Anacortes. I'd like to thank Evan, Kate, and Kako for your beautiful and wonderful articulate comments.
Can you pull the microphone just a little bit closer down? Thank you.
Yeah. So, I believe the future and the culture of Anacortes should be one of caring for everyone equitably. Our town is failing our community and the people who most need our support. Caring for everyone doesn't make you less important. We shouldn't be judging ourselves on how we, we should be judging ourselves on how we deal with every community member regardless of their status. Just because of a bunch of selfish nimbies are supportive of doing everything they can to rid our, rid our town of humans we should all care about, that doesn't make the people who stand up for marginalized communities crazy. I direct that comment directly to you, Ryan. Going hard at T Avenue and targeting a specific community because people are getting off on it is disgusting. I care, and everyone is valuable. The fact that you care more about perception and votes is disgusting. Let's actually fight for a change that makes a difference, not what looks good on a resume or campaign site or excites the liberals and republicans, because this just seems to be pure hatred. Let's fight to be a town that actually cares, and that starts with treating everyone with dignity. Your ordinances don't do that. I'm stoked you're going to give 50 grand to community action like we totally already talked about doing a long time ago, but we need to do better. Your ordinances specifically target marginalized communities on purpose based on your own testimony earlier, and it's obscene. We need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking for other raised hands. Anybody online? I've got a few attendees online. All right, council, ordinances, want to talk one at a time? The oversized parking, 4035.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I would like to talk a little bit about the reasoning behind the four-hour limit for oversized vehicles. I think it's to do with, actually, I'm not totally certain, so if that could be explained, that would be helpful.
Mr. Walters, you want to take a stab at that?
The four-hour number is a somewhat arbitrary number, but the objective is to be shorter than the 72-hour number, and also to be able to articulate a number that a police officer could encounter within a single shift. For dealing with violations of the 72-hour parking code in any area of the city, but also in residential areas, you're talking three full days, and given that police officers may not be working constantly, you might have five days or more, or maybe more than a week before you actually can verify that somebody has been in violation of 72 hours. And the objective is to just say, we're just not going to park RVs in residential neighborhoods where streets are narrower, you've got people playing in the street, you have tried to limit speed limits to help improve the safety of those areas, but if you've got RVs and other oversized vehicles, you obstruct sight and you may cause other problems like maneuvering around those vehicles on narrower streets. So, it could be four hours, it could be eight hours, it could be, you know, some other number, but it doesn't apply exclusively to RVs. It's all those oversized vehicles. So, it's, the important thing, I think, is to be able to articulate quickly, hey, you can't park your commercial vehicle or your RV here, so it's not an overnight thing.
And in case there's, this is not to do with parking a passenger vehicle, so if someone is, that still is limited to 72 hours, so if someone is going to go over to Gueimas or, you know, be somewhere, there's still 72-hour parking, that hasn't changed at all. But as far as the four-hour limit, I don't know if that's something that we should talk to enforcement, code enforcement about also, and if that seems reasonable, or if we should explore making it longer, like six hours or eight hours. It is arbitrary, and it does seem short.
The only other thing I'd say about that, it's consistent with the four-hour limit in downtown.
Yeah, and I know, obviously, APD and our code enforcement officer has reviewed the ordinances, but we got our chief back there to back me up if that's not the case.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Carter.
That four hours is also tied to without permission, correct? So, it's just for a random vehicle to show up in a residential, so if they have permission, it can be longer, like if it's a worksite? As long as they have permission, it can be longer than four hours, correct?
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, as shown here, parking your oversized vehicle, the third row down, oversized vehicle with permission of the adjoining real property resident would be limited to 72 hours.
Not a change from our current code.
Yeah.
Any other points of concern? So, I guess, you know, I'm always trying to move things forward. Is there any objection, I think maybe some objection to the four-hour limit from Ms. Moulton? Any other objections to the four-hour limit as we move this forward? Mr. McDougall?
I'm not sure about the four-hour limit. Yeah.
And I, of course, will be looking for, well, which expert do you want me to try to bring to help you come up with that answer?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
A couple of things about this. So, first of all, if it were four hours, it'd be consistent with downtown. If it's eight hours, it still doesn't really accommodate overnight parking of an oversized vehicle. So, maybe that's still functional for us. If it's eight hours, it doesn't necessarily fit within a parking enforcement officer's single shift, but we do have other people that can hit the same vehicle to identify, you know, that it's been parked there for a longer period than the ordinance. Maybe a couple other points, though. First of all, I completely agree that homelessness is not immediately correlated with addiction or mental health. I think statistics show that there's a greater incidence of addiction and mental health problems among the homeless, and that may be a result of the homelessness. But I also completely agree that one of our greatest failings as a city is to solve this problem. Obviously, these are problems that are hard to solve, but that just means there's a lot of failure to go around across all the cities that have not solved these problems. And I think a really important point is that Martin v. Boise does not prohibit regulation of camping. The quote from the decision is, "On the merits, this opinion holds only that municipal ordinances that criminalize sleeping, sitting, or lying in all public spaces violate the Eighth Amendment." And it also points out that ordinances criminalizing sleeping in public places were never a viable solution to the homelessness problem. There's a lot of good points in Martin v. Boise, but it doesn't stand for the proposition that you can't regulate it at all. And that's the objective here, is to regulate behavior, not to prohibit the existence, the literal just existence of homeless people in the city. Four-hour parking rule, as proposed, wouldn't affect T Avenue, for example, which is primarily where people have located, and they have located, I think, on T Avenue to avoid being where people have located, and they have located, I think, on T Avenue to avoid being in residential neighborhoods. So I don't think that this will change a lot of behavior, but it will provide a tool where there is a problem. So I, I would certainly be all right with changing it from four hours to eight hours or some other number that council, the rest of council supports as well. But there are some other edits to the ordinance that we would need to make to be able to move it forward and make it functional. As I mentioned, the question of places where there aren't curbs and where there's unimproved portions of the right-of-way. And then we should also look forward, I think, to a complete rewrite of the parking chapter to make the entirety of the chapter and all the various provisions easier to read and easier to enforce.
The holy grail of municipal codes, parking. Yeah. So, yeah, I, I mean, it sounds like we have a little more, I'm not looking to obviously get you all to pass this, I just wanna make sure we know what to bring next time around. Ms. Cleland.
Yeah. Maybe Chief Floyd can come answer this, but if, you know, I think the, the sticking point is the four hours for oversized vehicles or if it needs to be adjusted. Can you speak to how, I mean, I remember in some of the committee meetings, it was yes, four hours was a way to kind of make sure within a shift you could have some bound, some, some buffer to see it and follow up with it. Can you speak to your professional opinion if there's positives or negatives for four, six, eight hours?
So our current parking enforcement and code enforcement person's working eight-hour shifts. Under the proposed budget request that I have for 2023, we're looking for a part-time parking enforcement person. We have yet to determine how we're gonna structure that person's working hours, so I would not be able to give you a fair response on how we, how that would fit with what the potential parking enforcement officers' hours would be and, and what would be the most ideal scenario. I would also like to add that Officer Naibo will be working on a complete rewrite of that statute, or that ordinance, working with our city attorney, just as we did with the animal control statutes, 'cause she has some light duty assignment coming up, and that'll be the ideal time to conduct that. I would also like to add that I would support Mr. Walters' proposal to make the 72-hour violation an infraction, to bring that in line with the rest of our parking enforcement statutes. As this current one is probably the only misdemeanor section that we have, and that actually created some confusion with the administrative office of the courts that recently audited the bail books, and they actually missed that because it is out of character with the rest of the statutes.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
Since you're here, Chief Floyd, so what does this look like when it happens? What happens to the RV after four hours when the officer comes back?
They would be sided with the appropriate infraction under the city ordinance, and then there would be a fine amount associated with that infraction, similar to that of a speeding ticket or another civil infraction.
So this is a deterrent for people to not park in residential areas, clearly, but if they do, and then they stay and they stay, what happens? They don't get towed, they don't, I'm just looking for the results, the consequences, like does, if the person just, can they just still stay and stay?
I think that there would be other considerations that would come into play beyond just the 72-hour, or the, the four-hour parking window if this was be a more prolonged issue.
So what would those?
I mean, that, depending on the individual's status in that vehicle, it could be up to and including towing, but that is typically our, our last resort option, and we try to find a solution that works for everyone to avoid that.
Thanks, oh, thank you. And I do wanna say that I believe that our police culture at the APD is very compassionate and kind and works with people, not against them, to help them get the aid that they need and to be a friendlier presence than in many, many places around the country. I, I have a lot of faith in our APD and also their level of training in de-escalation, in talking to people, and also as far as being the people who can authorize a trespass warning, I would say they're way more qualified to do that than a department head who is currently, who is able to do that. So I, I just wanted to throw in my support for that as, as well.
Thanks for that comment, 'cause certainly I agree from what I see every day, and they do trespass, obviously, private property, you know, that's part of, part of what they do, working with the private property owner would be very similar, working with, say, a department head, for example, to determine the disruptiveness. So they're pretty well-versed in that process on the trespass. But we're still on the parking ordinance, but it sounds like, again, with a halftime, it's hard to see that you're gonna get any more than an eight-hour shift out of the additional parking enforcement person. So I think I'm trying to get a, get a better feel if you're, if you're gonna get a, get a good answer on the four-hour versus, say, an eight-hour. But again, you know, if you wanna think about that and send your comments into the chief.
Can I ask?
Yeah, Ms. Cleland.
So, I mean, the 72 hours, it's 72 hours for oversized vehicles with permission of the adjoining property owner, or if the property owner owns it, limited to 72 hours. So I guess my question is the, without permission of resident of adjoining property, is this going, how it's going to be enforced? Do we expect to have parking enforcement that is able to kind of tour around the neighborhoods on a regular basis, or is this gonna be complaint-based, or can you speak to that at all?
At this point in time, it'd be complaint-based until we have a person that's dedicated to the parking enforcement. One potential problem that I do see is if the individual's parked there with permission from the adjacent resident and the vehicle is not registered to the address that's in front of it, it's, it's coming upon us to track down who has given permission for that vehicle to be there, and I think that takes up additional time. I, I believe we could probably work through some modifications to the ordinance that would resolve that, but that's the only potential issue that arose in what I've seen to this point.
Mr. Walters?
Well, and remembering that that is based on the existing code provision, the existing code provision does relate to the vehicle being registered to the, to the owner of the adjacent real property, but I think as a practical matter, it's not really enforced, maybe at all. It, it seems to me that there's very frequently going to be a difference between the owner of the adjacent real property and the registered vehicle, even with permission. And if nobody calls to complain, the police aren't gonna respond, and the most likely person to call to complain is that person who would give the permission, the person whose house the vehicle is parked in front of. So I kinda feel like that would get worked out. But there is a distinct difference here, it's the permission of rather than owned by, so that, you know, if you have a visitor, you know, or if you are not the same person, you, you might both live in the house, but you're not registered owner of both the same vehicle in the house. So it is a little bit more flexible that way. I would propose that we move on to the, to the next one, because we do need to identify this way to deal with unimproved portions of the right-of-way, and we can bring back a map of the proposed residential areas, and then we could also put four, six, eight, highlight that as a choice for council to review the next time we bring it back.
Yep, I got it. So the zones, a couple options on the hours, and what was the, the third one?
Unimproved portions.
Unimproved portions, okay. That might, yeah, I think we can probably capture that in some language. As far as putting that on a map, that would be a little bit of a challenge for us. All right, we'll move on to, for council, 4036, the sidewalk obstructions. If you still have control of your slides. There we go. All right, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
I thought I spotted, ma'am, did you raise your hand? Did you? Yeah.
You can, you can always ask a question. Typically, we wanna make sure to get the right answer, so usually, we're not gonna respond right away.
Resident of Anacortes, one clarifying question that I have is how the oversized parking affects art festival, shipwreck days, waterfront festival, the farmer's market, things like that, because a lot of those folks do have RVs, they come here for the weekend, they set up before, they're here afterwards, and they are parked out in those residential areas, and I would want to ensure that they can still do that.
Yeah, okay, we got it. I think that's still a point for the previous, previous ordinance. Take a look at. All right, Mr. Walters.
So in response to a couple of public comments on this one, the hours for sleeping on the sidewalk as proposed would be between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and one comment was that 10:00 PM is particularly late, especially in winter. Yeah, I, I think that's a valid point. These hours are based on the hours that were in Bellingham's ordinance on the same topic. This ordinance is modeled on Bellingham's ordinance. So they could be something else, but that is what that they're, what they're using.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. It seems that an earlier hour than 10:00 PM would be reasonable, and again, just to, to reiterate that this is just in the central business district, so it's not prohibiting people from sleeping during the day in other places, just the central business district. I would be comfortable with moving that 10:00 PM hour earlier to eight or nine.
Like a, like a half a day, a 12-hour number, perhaps. Any other comments, council?
Just one more.
Ms. Moulton, yeah.
Sorry, we, we talked about taking the second, the third whereas, taking low-income people, taking low-income out of the whereas and putting in, just, just leaving people or maybe making a reference to children. So I hope that that can get incorporated into whatever one we ultimately, if we adopt it, that that would be changed, please.
Yeah, I think that's, if there's any objection to that? Mr. Walters?
I, I have no objection to that. If we're making edits, I might also suggest that where it exempts sitting or lying down due to a medical emergency, a mental health emergency would also be a good addition there.
All right, any other changes, edits that we will bring back? Are we ready to move on to the trespass ordinance, 4037?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters?
This one as well is based on another jurisdiction, because that's what we do, is we steal examples from other locations where things are working, and this particular one is from Port Townsend, and they've had it in place for quite a few years. The proposed code of conduct includes prohibitions on three classes of behavior, dangerous behavior, illegal behavior, and unreasonably disruptive behavior. And there's further definition of each of those. Unreasonable disruptive behavior includes unreasonably hostile or aggressive language or gestures, unreasonably loud vocal expression, or unreasonably boisterous physical behavior. And there's also an exception to all of those prohibitions for any constitutionally protected action or speech. All of, any constitutionally protected action or speech is excluded from the prohibitive conduct. This ordinance is held up by MRSC as an example of a good ordinance that protects people's due process rights when they are excluded from government facilities.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton.
I really appreciate the, the language in this ordinance. I think it is clear, as clear as it can be, what's acceptable behavior and what is not. And I can think of an example of someone who used to live here and was on the Tommy Thompson trail all the time and was, was verbally abusive and threatening to especially women and girls, and was trespassed for, you know, multiple times from the Tommy Thompson trail. And that's an example, to me, of why something like this is important. If someone's disruptive at the library, they can't go back to the library, or if they're disruptive at a park, and it does by no means applies to anywhere else except for the place that they were causing the dangerous, illegal, or unreasonably disruptive behavior. And again, I think that our APD are good judges of that, so this is an ordinance that I'm in favor of.
Any other potential changes? Chief, did you have something you needed to add?
I just would request that we make the proposal for one year to be consistent for officers in the field. It's logistically much more difficult to go in and track how many trespasses an individual has had for the purpose of a progressively sliding scale. Making it one year, I think, is, for consistency's sake, much more efficient, especially when this proposal adds the ability for an appeals process where there currently doesn't have one, and that allows the amount of time to be amended if the one year is deemed unreasonable.
And, and that's consistent with other trespass, like from private property.
Correct.
And also has the exception for if you have city, certain city business and all that, that's still in the ordinance, as I understand, you're still, and if you have to legally conduct business in that city facility, I think it's protected.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters?
Chief Floyd had suggested that, and I think that the appropriate consideration here, though, is that based on my reading of the case law and MRSC's advice, we must have a progressive schedule for trespass warnings. So I don't, I don't think that we can go directly to one year.
I, I guess I was just wondering that, rather than the progressive, it has all those exceptions for being, you know, even if you're trespassed, if you have city business that you have to conduct that's legitimate and it still has the output. It's over to, over to you all to have that debate.
And one other thing I'd point out about this one that I didn't point out in my summary is that this ordinance does not apply to public streets and sidewalks, 'cause they're regulated by the Streets and Sidewalks Code.
Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to follow the recommendation of the MRSC folks, so a progressive, you know, apologies, not as, not as simple to, to enforce, but I think it's best to probably, to go with their advisement.
Ms. Moulton.
I would agree, I agree with that, too. And also, I really appreciate the opportunity for people to appeal and to be considered, that, I think that's a really strong part of that, this ordinance as well.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubie.
I have a question as to what the option for delivering the trespass warning is when it's described as being a personally-delivered trespass warning. Can you walk us through what that might look like if they're not being reachable by mail?
We would use the same standards as a, like service of a protection order, those have been clearly defined by the court, so certified mail, delivered in person, any of the standards that have been recognized by the court is considered personal service.
All right, well, I'm reluctant to ask for a motion on this one, even though it seems like there might be consensus on it. Since we're gonna bring the other two back, we might as well bring them back as a trio.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters?
I actually think this one's ready to go.
Okay, all right.
Other, other than that one item, which I, I don't recommend we per- Other than that one item, which I don't recommend we pursue, I think this one's ready to go. So I move approval of ordinance 4037 as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Moulton to approve ordinance 4037, trespass on city property. Any further discussion? Swetnam, would you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Walters.
Yes.
Councilmember Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Councilmember Moulton.
Yes.
Councilmember McDougall.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubig.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item 6E, ordinance 4033, 2023-2028 Capital Facilities Plan, and item 6F, ordinance 4034, 2023 Budget, Discussion and Possible Action. I know last week we came close to action, but I think there was some desire to have more council members here. So we're here, and Mr. Hoagland has graciously joined us. But Mr. Stefan is here also. So thanks for dialing in, Mr. Hoagland. And I think if I turned it over to... Philip, if you're ready to go, you can go. And, but we're really, with any other questions, we didn't receive any, I don't think, last week, or I did not receive any from Council. Mr. Hoagland, you want to chime in and just say hello?
Yes, thank you, members of the Council and members of the audience. So that's correct. Last week, we were ready to go with the CFP and the annual budget. We did have a few council members absent, so we decided to carry it over to this week to entertain any of those comments or questions that Council may have. And I'd be happy to try and address any of those at this time.
All right, Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, one, in the CFP, one of the listed projects is replacement of the solid waste roll-off containers. Why don't we just put those into ERNR?
I can't remember the dollar amount on that one. I'm guessing it's less than $20,000. Well, I think that's probably, if it's more than $20,000, I think it has to be in the CFP, but now I can't remember now. Mr. Hoagland?
Yeah, $20,000 and capital in nature are the criteria for the CFP. So the solid waste utility, we do routinely budget money in the CFP for the replacement of those waste carts, those waste bins. So as far as putting them in ERNR, I guess, I haven't given that any thought before. It doesn't kind of like strike me as the type of equipment that we generally have in the ERNR that's, you know, like a vehicle, like a self-propelled vehicle. But it probably is not unreasonable to entertain that.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The reason I suggest that is simply that it seems like we're replacing them on a regular basis. So it seems like something that would, could be facilitated by the ERNR system, just like a car, which is, or the ladder truck that we're going to put into ERNR, which also exceeds the $20,000, but has a sort of a defined lifespan and gets replaced on a regular schedule. I wonder if Mr. Stefan might bring up the Zoom window as well, because we can't actually see Mr. Hoagland. There he is.
Oh, sorry, I could see him on my display.
I'm not, I'm not the expert on these, the containers, but I do know that they don't wear out on a linear basis. The ones that are in service last longer because they get, as they get dumped, the water comes out of them and they don't rust as quickly. The way we set up our ERNR fund, we actually track each piece of equipment individually and set aside that money for replacement charges in the future. With this equipment, it wouldn't necessarily line up that way because of the way those containers are cycled in and out of service. But they, I'm sure they do all have relatively or roughly the same life, but...
I think I understand your answer as a lifecycle, tracking the lifecycle of the solid waste containers is maybe different than some of the vehicles.
Yeah, that's right. So that every year that the solid waste division evaluates and makes the call on which containers, if any, are going to be surplus that year and then replaced. So we do have the budget authority set every year at that same level, but it may or may not be exactly that about depending on which ones get rotated out of service.
All right, then I'll ask Mr. Walters, is this something we can evaluate next year, or is this going to?
I don't propose an edit at this point. I was just asking the question.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, I'm glad everyone had a good time looking at it. I know there's some OpenGov stuff to still work out, but it does match what we have in OpenGov versus what you all have been presented. So I will certainly entertain a motion.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
I move to approve ordinance 4033, adopting the 2023 through 2028 Capital Facilities Plan.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougall, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to adopt the 2023-2028 Capital Facilities Plan. Any further discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters?
I am a big proponent of capital facilities planning, I would say. And the statute requires a checklist of components in the capital facilities plan. There aren't maybe a lot of jurisdictions that are doing capital facilities planning really well, but, you know, those components that are required by the statute are an inventory of our existing facilities and how well they're performing, their conditions, their capacities, that forecast of future needs, irrespective of the list of projects, but the forecast of what we are going to need to maintain our current levels of service, to maintain our existing facilities, and to maintain the other things that aren't contained within our level of service standards, but are things we want to do. And then there's the six-year financing plan. So we have some of these components in the comprehensive plan text itself, but it really seems to me that the inventory of conditions and capacities is something that we ought to be looking at every single year, not just every eight years or 10 years, whenever the legislature decides we should update the comp plan. And then the final component that is required by the statute is a requirement to reassess the rest of our comp plan if the proposed funding falls short of the needs that we identify in the capital facilities plan. So upshot of all that is I think there's a lot more work to be done in capital facilities planning. I think you should be able to look in the plan and see how much REIT revenue we are expecting to take in, even though, you know, that is just a projection, but still a projection, and then how much we're expecting to spend based on the plans or the projects that are in the plan, how much general revenue, how much user fees from the utilities, and then also how much we should be spending. You know, like in the water system plan, there will be a number that we should be spending to maintain our water infrastructure. And we should have that number in there, even if this particular year's projects fall short of that number or exceed that number. So I think that I'll propose in, for 2024, maybe more of an outline for what we need to achieve in our capital facilities planning project. And I'm really not sure that OpenGov is the mechanism to do this because we really have to have this work, and I think it was a good effort this year, but it's not obvious to me that it's working out. As part of our water system plan, we're going to get an Excel-based tool from the consultant that's preparing the water system plan that should provide that interconnectiveness, the math, and maybe that would be a better tool, I don't know. But I really do think we should drill down hard in the next 12 months, or I guess in the next six months, you know, so that when we go to, as staff, go together to put the 2024 plan together, that we are able to produce a product that demonstrates those linkages and demonstrates that we've got the money to do the projects that we want. So I'll vote in favor now, but I really would like us to buckle down and do that other linkage work for 2024.
Thank you. Again, I'm confident that this capital facilities plan is certainly above average compared to many other municipalities, but I'm also confident that, yes, we can improve upon this. And, yeah, the inventory management, I think, is a great input, so. Thanks for those comments. Any other comments before I ask for the vote?
Yeah, I was just going to round out, or round out what Mr. Walters said. I think somewhat of a narrative would be helpful just for not only the public, but for us to kind of have it memorialized in time of kind of what our priorities are, kind of a punch list of those top projects that we really see as goals for our community, so that the public is, has a better understanding of that. And then also kind of an overview in a narrative form would be helpful. And I know there are some of that there currently, but looking at some other cities, they've done a little bit, a little bit more kind of specific year-to-year, which would be, I think, a benefit. And maybe we can talk about that at the retreat.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I want to agree with Mr. Walters and Ms. Cleland McGrath. I think both of those, their points are very good. And, yeah, to have some additional context for us as council members and for the public as well, to kind of create that more kind of complete picture of what we're doing would be really, really great.
Thank you. Okay, so I've got a motion by Mr. McDougall and a second by, I think, Ms. Cleland McGrath to approve ordinance 4033, Capital Facilities Plan, 2023 to 2028. Ms. Swetnam, would you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Councilmember Moulton.
Yes.
Councilmember McDougall.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubig.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to item 6F, ordinance 4034, the 2023 budget discussion with possible action. Although I think there's a requirement to do these together, if I've heard that correctly. Mr. Hoagland, anything to add?
No, just a reminder, and I, Mayor, you are correct. The capital facilities plan needs to be adopted in conjunction with the budget. But just a reminder that we did include the edits that Council has talked about the last few weeks in terms of the training budget and the legislative additional money for Skagit Community Action and funding to run the ballot initiative next year. So I think we're scored away here.
Council. Any questions? Any motions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Going for it. I make a motion to approve ordinance 4034, adopting the 2023 operating budget.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, second by Mr. McDougall. Any additional comments? Mr. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Miller. The ordinance, as presented before us, is very similar to the format that we usually receive. But I did want to note that Ocarbor recently approved their budget, I think, or at least it was on their agenda. And I looked at their packet, and it contains in their packet all of the materials that generally Mr. Hoagland inserts into the budget book after we adopt the ordinance. But Ocarbor has all that material on their agenda in their packet for adoption. And I tend to think that that would provide better background for Council, especially as we are going through evaluation of the proposed budget. But it would also lay out some of the policies. For example, you know, here, staff is constrained to follow the budget as described at the fund level, and that's consistent with the statute. But anything below this level, we looked at many, many pages of the budget, but none of those are included here. And there's no policy that constrains any changes within each fund. But we could be operating at a more enhanced level of detail if we had more of the materials included in the budget ordinance. So here again, I think we could learn from some other jurisdictions and look at what they're doing and look at how they're presenting things and maybe make some additional changes for 2024.
I agree. There's definitely some opportunity to get better as we move forward. And I think somebody mentioned the council and staff retreat. I think that's an opportunity to maybe build some of those in to make sure we've got a better, always trying to get the earlier and better product to you all. Any other comments?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Yeah, I wanted to comment that I'm, you know, it has been spoken about already, but just how very glad I am that we've got that 50K in for the Skagit Community Action opening an office here in Anacortes. And just for reference, like, that's one of the things that we're doing. This is a pervasive problem in our community, and, you know, we're working on a number of fronts there. I actually looked back at our 2019 budget, and there is no line item 109 for affordable housing in that budget at all. It doesn't exist. And so that's, like, that is one of the line items in this budget on the budget summary page. So that's, that is important, that's something, $700,000 worth on affordable housing. And, you know, I don't think we're done either. We're going to keep working on this. So, thank you.
Thanks. And just for your all's information, staff met with Community Action last week, so we've got the first bones of the contract together, so we'll be bringing that to you all soon. So, yep, that'll be certainly something we'll execute in 2023.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Tagging on to what Mr. McDougall said, you know, we have that affordable housing line as a result of the sales tax measure that we put out to the voters, and 55% of voters said, yeah, we want to address this problem. And so I do think that that is a feather in the cap of our community, that our community was willing to do that. And they're also willing to do more. And we just have to present those options to them and figure out how it is we're going to pursue real solutions. But, you know, we're making some progress. Is it fast enough? No. Has it solved the problem? No. There's always more to do, and there's certainly a lot more to do in this space, which is why we look forward to public comment. And we take those comments even when they are personally affront to us, including me, and I appreciate them regardless.
And on the affordable housing line, I mean, we're seeing it built, being built, you know, about to cut ribbons, you know, the things are happening there, so. Thanks for the comments. I think I still have a motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath and a second by Mr. McDougall. There aren't any more. I will call for the vote, Ms. Swetnam.
Councilmember Moulton.
Yes.
Councilmember McDougall.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubig.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Walters.
Yes.
Councilmember Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Council, for all that hard work and inputs on the budget. Okay, we're on to item 6G, Resolution 3103, levy, lid, lift. And I think, I know Ms. Swetnam's going to be presenting.
Sorry about that. Okay, thank you, Mayor Miller, members of Council, members of the audience. So we're bringing back Resolution 3103, which is the levy, lid, lift resolution that would place on the up-
place on the upcoming April 2023 election, a voter initiative to increase the levy lid. So the purpose of the levy proceeds is to add public safety staff to improve levels of service and response time to protect public health and safety. And during last week's discussion, the proposal was to add five new police officers and eight new firefighter medics. So based on that discussion, staff have updated the resolution. Your packet has both track changes and a clean copy, and I circulated today an updated version that has a change to the language that would actually go on the ballot itself. So I thought I would just read that quickly, just so you all are aware of how that will read. So the Anacortes City Council adopted resolution 3103 concerning funding to improve public safety service levels and response time. This proposition would provide funding for five additional police officers and eight additional firefighter medics by establishing a maximum regular property tax levy of $1.34335 per $1,000 of assessed valuation in 2023 for collection in 2024, which is an estimated increase of approximately $0.36240 per $1,000. The 2024 levy amount will be used for the purpose of computing, excuse me, the limitations for subsequent levies under RCW 8455. So that was kind of just tightening, clarifying, improving, ensuring that that's consistent with what the revised code of Washington requires for word limits on ballot initiatives. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that both chiefs are here as well, and happy to help.
Counsel, any questions? Want to make sure we got this language right, number one, and the dollar amount. I know we spent a lot of finance time in making sure we've got those numbers correct.
And can I just add one clarification? I apologize, I didn't indicate that that amount was calculated pretty meticulously between the finance department and the chiefs, and that amount represents the dollar figure to cover the additional staff for, you know, five and eight, that's the salaries plus benefits in addition to, I think, an amortized amount for equipment costs. So not the full upfront cost to purchase equipment for those individuals, but what those costs would be over a 10-year period, that would be a year worth, so.
Got some hired and equipped initially.
Correct.
Mr. Walters.
And I think that it's maybe important to note that the, you know, the equipment cost is useful to include, but it doesn't really amount to very much compared to staffing. All those ongoing expenses, not first gear costs, but ongoing expenses, makes sense to include here.
Yeah, if, just to kind of, to illustrate that point, we looked at the average additional cost for, you know, average property in Skagit County, and the additional cost of the staff would add $227.60 a year to that bill. When you put in the cost for the gear, it goes from 227 to 235. So not a huge increase to get them equipped as well.
Okay, this is actually, this is open for public discussion, if any of you all have waited around for this one to come up and address the council. Okay.
I live here in town. I just wanted to make a comment based on the adding five additional police officers. We, if you've attended previous meetings held in this room and solicited by other leaders in our community, there's a rhetoric that's been passed around that Anacortes is being riddled with crime, that, you know, the crime is out of control, I've heard, and it seems silly. And we all know that it is. But allowing that narrative to live and drive our decisions seems slightly risky and potentially destructive. And so in looking at the numbers of adding five additional police officers, and then adding the, I believe, two that we had in June, will be increasing the staff of the Anacortes Police Department by 33%. That is a very large number. And, you know, so if we're not justifying that number based on increases in crime, we're not justifying that number, anything other than best practices issued by kind of, well, police best practices. However, those numbers of those best practices generate from the police union organizations. So if tomorrow, the best practice was decided to be, we need 50 police officers for every 100 people in Anacortes, that would become the best practice. We do have a metric, we do have a number, but that's not necessarily reflective on the needs of that community. And so we are gravely increasing the number of police officers, also the cost of that upon our community, based on no other metric than a desire. And I think that that's maybe not the correct avenue that we pursue in our community. I think that we all agree that it's a safe community, and its safety is what draws us here. But we're not going to experience a 33% increase in crime. We haven't experienced that. And if we have, it falls on our leaders to communicate that to the citizens. So I just wanted to push back on that number. It seems very aggressive and excessive, and I think that that should potentially be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the counsel on the levy, lift, lid resolution? Okay, counsel. Mr. Walters.
I think that there are quite a few compelling reasons for this measure, on the fire side, on the police side. We're talking about, through this resolution, adding five police officers. We added one during this year as part of the budget that we adopted last year, an officer, to make room for an officer to be dedicated to the Skagit County and local drug enforcement So we're talking about an addition of five. I don't think we're talking about an addition of seven. I guess that would be an addition of six, if you count the one during 2022. But I think that the number of incidents of crime is not quite the right metric as well, because what we're talking about is an increase in call volume over 10 years, where we added no patrol officers, and an increase in call complexity. You know, more reports, more data, more officers needed to respond to calls, which is precisely the right approach as well. Legislature has made changes to the statutes, which have, they've made changes in the way we need to do policing. But at least one of those changes is to make sure that we, in fact, have more people respond to incidents, like the one that I talked about at the library from several weeks back, which is precisely the right approach. It protects the rights of the people that the police are interacting with, and it protects our police officers and it protects our community. So we have a, we have a big job ahead of us to make the complete case for these, but it's very well established in my mind, for both police and for fire. And it is an expense, and it's an expense that, you know, will fall, arguably, I mean, it's based on property value, so people with more expensive houses will pay more, people with less expensive houses will pay less. But still, it's an expense that, you know, people may notice, and it's one that we need to help mitigate. But it's not like we can find this money in the budget, because we are so far behind in staffing. And I do not hear people ever tell us, you know, we would like to cut the library or cut the museum, and if we cut the entirety of the museum, we wouldn't have enough money to fund these positions. So if we, if we want to have a safe community, and by safe, I mean not just free from crime, but also one where medical calls don't go unanswered, where there's sufficient staffing to respond to fire, I think an investment of $200 or so is well worth it. I mean, it is worth it for me. I think it's worth, I think most of our citizens would say that it's worth it for them. When they see what it is they're buying for that 200 or so dollars, I think that they will agree. And it's just not that much compared to the alternative outcome, where there isn't a police officer to respond to your property crime because they're too busy, where there isn't a police officer to be able to respond to a pursuit, including a foot pursuit, if that's necessary, where there's no medical firefighter medic able to come to your heart attack. That's cheap insurance, from my mind. So I'm supportive of this measure. I'm supportive of putting it on the ballot, moving it forward tonight, and getting on with the work of building the case for this explicitly and moving it forward so that we can have it on the ballot in April, we can approve it as a community in April, and then we can do the planning necessary to put it into effect January 2024.
Thank you for that. And I do believe we've made a very strong case here, but it is, will be up to us leaders in the community to make that case to the people.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. One of the things that I'd like to point out here is the emphasis on service level and response times. So one of the things the state is mandating is de-escalation training and teaching people compassion and having officers go through training on how to properly do this, and for calls like domestic violent calls and behavioral health needs. You want people to show up that have the skills to properly handle those calls, because when there is a crisis, you don't want somebody trying to scoot out after 30 minutes of talking with somebody. You want people that are trained to know how to calm someone down, how to focus on compassionate listening with both victims and alleged perpetrators, or whatever the proper terminology is for that. And some of those are really, really scary calls for the people that are involved. And when I think about why this is important to me and to the people that I care about, I want, I want that response time to be as long as it needs to get the information that somebody would need to properly prosecute sexual assault or domestic violence. And I would like the voters and people that we talk to to think about that as well.
Ready to make a motion, perhaps?
Mayor.
Mr. Walters.
Well, let's talk as well about T. Avenue. I am not motivated to move this resolution forward in any way because of T. Avenue. You know, I've been down to T. Avenue, I've talked to some of the people down there, and I've also talked to our people on the ground that are interacting with the people down there. They don't, they tell me, because I ask directly, do you think that these people are a public safety problem? And with the exception of one, who is actually not really with that group, no, they don't think it's a public safety problem. I don't, I don't really think a police response is the right response to people that are homeless. Now, if people are violating the law, then yes, you involve the police. But this resolution stands, and this ballot measure stands apart from all the issues on T. Avenue and the issues with homelessness. That is principally a humanitarian problem. We have employed the police on this issue, and the police have largely done good work, but we've employed the police because we don't, we don't employ a social worker directly. We work with the police department because they have a social worker. We work with the fire department because they have a social worker. We could look at changes to that. But this is in no way driven by any of the situation on T. Avenue, and I think that there's been suggestions in the community that those are connected. I don't see them as connected at all. I see the police as needing to respond to crimes, and we read about crimes, we read about crimes involving handguns more frequently or other weapons, and I would like our police force to be well-staffed, not operating on a shoestring when we have those kinds of events.
Mr. Walters.
Go ahead.
I move approval of the resolution as presented.
Mayor Miller, I actually had a question. So I definitely understand, because I've been through kind of fire ops training, so I understand the step function for the need of, for firefighters, where, you know, it's not necessarily helpful to just add one, or maybe add two. Like, there's a lot of calls where the requirement is three people, maybe even four people, for different types of functions. And then to be able to manage, you know, two separate calls at a time, you need, you know, six people, that kind of thing. So that's where the larger number comes from. I know that with police, there's also a step function, so it's not necessarily going to move the needle to add one or add two. But could, would you mind, Chief, if you could, to come up and explain that step function and how this number is, the number that meets that step function, and if I'm using the right term?
Yeah, it's very similar to the analogy you were giving with fire. Giving the domestic violence calls, for an example, those traditionally are a response in at least multiples of two, just because those are typically, have high potential for to be volatile situations. And the more individuals that are present and part of that incident, then the more officers it's going to require to respond. Excuse me. The domestic violence response is actually a great example that I would like to use to kind of outline why this needed, is important for us. When the council's comprehensive plan that I referenced on previous council meetings was adopted in 2016, the responsibilities at many of the call types we go to were dramatically different than they are now. And taking the domestic violence call, for example, it would be at least a two-officer response and would likely take, in the neighborhood of an hour and a half or so, to complete. That call response would entail the officers showing up, speaking with the involved parties, identifying any potential witnesses, taking written statements, photographing any injuries present, looking for evidence at the scene, in addition to any booking paperwork, transport to the Skagit County Jail, if it becomes a mandatory arrest situation. Today, that exact same call still takes at least a two-officer response, but you're potentially looking at two and a half to three hours for that same call, because in addition to the previously mentioned responsibilities at the scene of that case, we now also have to fill out a lethality assessment form, looking at the potential lethality for the victim in this case. We put that victim on the phone with an advocate, which there's no time limit for. Many times, they don't have a phone, or their phone's been disabled by the individual that we're arresting, and we're allowing them to use our phone. And so the officers at that scene, until that call is concluded, and we've determined that we have a safe plan of action for that victim, whether it be taking them somewhere else where they can be safe, whether it be helping them take steps to make their own residence more safe. We also have to ask questions regarding any presence of firearms in the residence, and if there's firearms present, that victim has the right to request that we remove them. If this person is, God forbid, a collector, we could be there for quite a long time, making sure that those are appropriately packaged, they're safe and unloaded, and that they're not damaged in the process. So it's a substantial they're safe and unloaded, and that they're not damaged in the process. So it's a substantial increasing amount of time when we would spend at the exact same call.
Thank you very much.
Good question, and thanks for the question. And we do have a motion by Mr. Walters. So I'm, I'll be looking for a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Carter to approve resolution 3103, levy, lid, lift. Any additional discussion? Ms. Swetnam, can you take the vote, please? And you can do it from any spot there.
Thank you. Actually, before I take the vote, can I just clarify that the motion is to adopt the resolution that was circulated today with the updated ballot?
Thank you for clarifying that, because I'm seeing head nods there. Mr. Walters, is your motion?
Mayor Miller, yes. Yeah, and I don't think that that document made it on to the agenda, the public agenda, but it, the only change was that change that you read.
Correct. That's on the screen right now.
Okay. And, Mr. Carter, you're good with that? Okay. All right. So a motion by Mr. Walters, second by Mr. Carter. Ms. Swetnam, would you take the vote?
Councilmember McDougal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubig.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Walters.
Yes.
Councilmember Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Councilmember Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for that work and more, much more work ahead. And no further business before the council. I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.